Called to order, welcome to the Osage Minerals Council meeting Friday, September 6th at 10:00 a.m. We'd like to start, I've asked Councilman Redcorn to give an opening prayer for us. Please rise.
We take care of these things that you get, God, that you help us to do the things that we need to do to take care of our people, our children. We ask you bless all our visitors and our friends, and we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Councilman Tishawala?
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chair Redigle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Chappelford?
Present.
Chairman Waller?
Present.
We're out of form.
Thank you. Would that like to go down the agenda? Going to go to item number four, election of a new chair, Councilman Big Horse.
Chairman, we just need to do a house, take care of a few matters, go a couple meetings, I don't know if you can get out of the way. Yes, sir. Take care of it. Go, talk about the discussion, whatever you need to do.
I would feel like the discussion part, do you guys want to go ahead and vote in a chair this morning, nominations?
Let's get that all done so we can, yes, sir, come up with, be, uh, like another one.
That's fine. Yes, ma'am.
So, are we going to open the floor for nominations? Is that what this is going to be today? We're going to actually look?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
I've just opened up the floor for nominations for your chair, but I do feel like you need to include the second position also.
Yes.
After a while, we'll just leave it at that. Yes, ma'am.
May I nominate someone?
You sure can.
I nominate Byron Redigle.
Okay. I'll second that.
A second, I have a second on the floor. With that, we'll ask for the vote, a roll call. Is that okay with council?
Sure, I have to.
No, it's got to be public. Have a roll call, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
No.
Second Chair Redigle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
No.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. With that, I'd like to ask that we have nominations for the second chair, just nominate.
Joe Tishawala.
Okay. Councilwoman, I'm not going to go ahead and just call for the roll call, please.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Redigle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
No.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can we take a short break for just a second? I think it is the perfect time and I'd like to say a couple words. Sure. With that, I'd like to say it's been an honor to represent the Osages for the last three tours of the Minerals Council. I want to say that it's always a privilege and an honor, but I also want to say that it's still an honor being on the Osage Tribal Council and the Osage Minerals Council. With that, I will assist my chairman and co-chair as best I can, and I appreciate y'all. And I understand the situation, I understand it very well. And with that, thank you all, God bless you all, and God bless my people. With that, I want to be the first one to congratulate. Thanks for the show. We don't have to change, did we, right now? No, no, no. But could you operate our meeting for us? Because I am going to go to my man at 2:00 p.m. With that being said, Lacy, can we just work it that way? Then you can reset this in our next meeting. With that, is there any other discussion? Yes, sir. You're the next.
I'd like to address everybody. Thank you for the consideration. It's an honor, and I told some of the members that I've been holding this for one year, just for one year.
And she knows I'm moving this away.
Go for one year, and next July, I'll be up in O'Callaghan. I'm a lot of them set down, but I'll go into them next July. Then somebody else can step in. Thank you. With that, going to new business on agendas, ground resources.
Chairman Oillees Matthew Patterson.
I was going to ask, I chatted with Chairman Waller about if we could talk about the DOE grant right up, and I think he told me yes. Is that still okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't.
You have to leave, wasn't it? You have to leave early.
Okay, so, if it's okay, I'm going to go into the DOE grant. Dr. Todd Johannes, head of the Chemical Engineering at the University of Tulsa, to present us on source CO2.
Welcome, Dr. Johannes. Thank you, Chairman, and the council. So, what I'd like to propose is, we saw a call for a DOE proposal about a month ago, we got excited. We've been working with Chevron for the last year or so, looking at using the Port of Catoosa as a carbon hub, to bring carbon into the Tulsa area for various uses. Thank you, appreciate it. So, this DOE project involves pre-fee study, so looking at just logistical, legal, business aspects of CO2 infrastructure. And so, our idea is really to, the hub would be the Port of Catoosa here. And at the Port of Catoosa, there's a company, CF Industries, that takes natural gas and makes ammonia out of it. And as a byproduct, they make carbon dioxide, CO2. It's a pure CO2 stream, but then they sell, into, part of it they sell into the beverage industry, and the rest of it, they kind of release to the atmosphere. And so, that would be kind of our model stream, but we see in the future that barges could be coming up, the Port of Catoosa, because that's connected into the entire Mississippi Channel, and so, there would be access to more CO2 than what was just coming from the fertilizer plant. And so, the next step is, once we have CO2 there, what do we do with it? And so, you know, there are a lot of pipelines, and we've got some folks on our team that are well versed in, you know, pipeline regulations, and, you know, right-of-way, and all those type of things. The idea being is that we could pipe the CO2 to the Osage mineral assets, and then use them for different things. And so, why is this important to the Osage Mineral Council? Why should we care? There are kind of three reasons I can think of. The first is enhanced oil recovery, this is something you're already doing with the Coffeyville plant, as far as I know, so this would be another source of CO2 to do that. Second would actually be reservoir storage, so to be able to store the CO2 in your depleted reservoirs. And the third one is actually the one I'm most excited about, and it's something looking into the future, you know, down the road, after your, you know, the oil and gas resources are depleted, because that will happen sometime in the future, you know, what do you do with those depleted wells? And so, the thought being, if you can get CO2 into, you know, Osage County here, with your mineral assets, you know, one of the things I was saying is, you could store the, you guys have, you control the reservoirs, the depleted reservoirs, and so, you know, whenever you're moving that CO2 around, you can essentially use this as a storage tank, and, you know, you can partner with wind, solar, hydro, so the core of engineers, to get hydrogen through electrolysis. So, one of the problems with renewable energy is, you know, the sun doesn't always shine, the wind doesn't always blow, and so, you get a lot of grid instability whenever you try to hook these renewable sources to our power grid. The Texas grid almost went down a couple years ago because of all of the wind resources that they have on, and how intermittent it is whenever it comes on and falls off. So, you know, there's a reaction that you can do, methenation reaction, to essentially get a green methane production out of it. And so, I think, I mean, long term, this is something that I think the minerals should be looking at. In terms of the DOE scope of work, really the focus is on Area of Interest Four, so it's this multi-volatile CO2 transport facility. If you take a look, and I know it's a little bit small on this screen, and I apologize for that, but it's an evaluation plan, some early engineering work, just to see if it even makes sense. Maybe it doesn't make sense, you know, sometimes with research, things don't work, but at least we have an idea of whether or not this is feasible, like the permitting, you know, all the legal ramifications would be kind of worked out. In terms of the funding, what it would look like is, they're going to fund up to about four or five projects, so there's 2.4 million in funding total. 800 would be the DOE share, and then there's 200 in cost share, so it's a million dollar grant total. It's a one-year project, so it's a fairly quick turnaround in terms of the project. What I'm thinking, and this is just preliminary, and I'm open to this, it's a preliminary discussion, looking at 600 to 700 K to TU, and then to 100 to 200 K to the Osage Mineral Council. And so, I know that, based on some preliminary discussions, that there's been some prior work with Aragon National Labs, and there might be some opportunity to bring some of that information, and that's what I'd be more willing to go up to that 200 K. In terms of the project team, so I'm a co-PI on here, I am the head of the Chemical Engineering Department at TU. My area of research really focuses on molecular biology and genetic engineering, and I more recently got into carbon capture, and so I don't have a publication record to be the principal investigator on this, but I have a young faculty member that we just hired out of Texas, that will be the PI on this. I have a faculty member at Petroleum, who's an expert in reservoirs, and I have Buford Palet, who's in our business school, who has expertise in energy, and business, and law, and he collaborates with Thompson, who's at TCU, who I believe made a presentation to the council years ago, and so, he would be on the project. What I need from the Mineral Council is a letter of support, and I did find out, my research office, in terms of cost share, the subcontractor, so the Osage Mineral Council would have to come up with cost share. Now, that can be done with just time, if we identify an engineer, or, you know, somebody with technical expertise that's going to help out on the project, they could donate their time, and that would count as cost share. We can also put in for education and outreach, there are different ways we can do cost share, not necessarily with somebody's time. The others that would be involved with the Port of Catoosa, I've already met with the directors of the Port of Catoosa, and they're very interested in the project. They were more concerned that you guys would be interested in the project, and so, I would have more conversations with them after I get done talking with you. And then CF Industries is the ammonia plant, who I've met the plant manager in the past, and toured that plant, and I have alumni that work there, so I think that connection would be fairly smooth. So, just in summary, it's just a pre-feed study involving Department of Energy proposal, it's a 30-page proposal, it's due in about a month, so I've got a lot of work ahead of me to write this up, but I really appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the Osage Mineral Council on this project, and look forward to developing those resources. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John Johannes. Open up the floor for questions. Councilman Redcorn?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dr. Johannes presented the floor with us Tuesday, I believe, went through a lot of the detail on this. My personal assessment is, I think this would flow well with the surface CO2 study that Mr. Rebar is overseeing. I just got correspondence today that there were some changes to the scope on that, just a general flow from the government saying, hey, there was an addendum to that project. Good news. I think the difference in what Dr. Johannes will bring, is with what Mr. Rebar's doing, that's less than a pure CO2 stream everywhere that you're dealing with, because your stacks and refineries and those kind of things. This is a, this is an opportunity to bring a well-established, pretty good, nice CO2 to the Osage. The second thing I think it does is that, and we've talked about this in previous councils, see if we can expand beyond the reservation border, and we even talked about using the Port of Catoosa, so this study, one-year study, could get us in those discussions. I mean, there could be more opportunity, because this Port of Catoosa gets our reservation opened up worldwide. So, I like it, I would be in support and favor of this study, and it's just a support letter from Chairman Waller, and I sent that to our attorney, and if you got any comments on that, basically, we included the title on that, and the rest of it is encouraging words, and we'll get this thing going. So, anyway, thank you, Chair.
I have a question. The barge, the CO2 is on there, it's in liquid form, where's it coming from?
So, that's the beauty of this, so, you know, the vision right now that Department of Energy is putting out is, it could come from almost anywhere, in the United States, once it's captured. And when it's on those barges and it goes in, there will be purity specs, so more than likely, it's going to be high purity, but that's a little bit down the road, and that's outside the scope of what we're looking at. They're just looking at developing these transport hubs, and these kind of nodes to get the system going.
The reason why I'm asking, we had another group in here, oh, a few weeks ago, and they were telling us that they were going to open up the Osage as the Mecca center for all CO2 to come from all over the world.
Okay.
And so, I'm asking.
Okay, I'm just saying, the nice thing is, is as much as you can handle, and you need, right? So, it's not something that...
Okay, I'm just asking, out of curiosity, you know, I know you don't want to...
I guess, you're...
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Okay, so, appreciate you coming today, and I was one of the ones in the meeting on Tuesday with three other council persons. Before I address a couple of questions, you, I need to address to our council, and legal council. I'm not aware of any addendum to our CO2 infrastructure grant that was awarded to us, and we're 60% through with the deliverable on it. What is that involved? What is that? How did you find out?
I just got it in an email, we get an announcement on our grants, the nation, and then bam, there was this, I read, because I'm looking forward to our geology out in West, that's my main focus. I looked on, I saw minerals, and I said, oh, okay, this is good, bam, then I looked up there, and I saw the word amendment on there, and I just, oh, okay.
So, let me ask our staff, do you know anything about our grant being amended, or any addendum to it? Have you received anything from the federal government about that, or from Aragon? Okay, so that's what, do you have any? Okay, so that's a surprise, I'm, you know, I'm shocked, because I have no idea. Now, I don't have any idea what's going on with our grant, but I sponsored with Council of Wind and Water in, back in 2021 or 22. Do you have something to send me?
Yes, is this the grant that you and the nation are, we're supposed to be working hand in hand? I mean, I don't understand why you don't know.
This is a grant that we applied for, it's not the one that we, by resolution, gave back to the nation, the one that with all that controversy. This is a grant called the CO2 Infrastructure Grant. So, we've been meeting, we've had a couple of meetings on this grant, and the grant was to determine the feasibility of bringing in CO2 from outside our mineral state, 50-mile radius, 100-mile radius, studying the feasibility, first of all, is finding the sources of CO2, and then determine the feasibility, and applying that to some of our major oilfields, to try to duplicate what is going on in the Burbank field, the CO2 EOR, which has been extremely successful. So, that's what that grant is, I didn't know, amended. Certainly, about this particular opportunity, and they're requesting a letter of support for TU to seek this grant. I didn't know anything about sending anything over to our attorney, so what did we send to our attorney?
I asked Dr. Johannes to do a draft letter for preparation for that.
Letter of support?
Letter of support. And he did that, and I swore it to God.
Okay, all right, so, with that being said, I appreciate that. The, this third application, besides storage, in EOR, had to do with hydrogen, and somehow using a method, I think you called it methenation, it's some equipment that would convert the CO2, when combined somehow with hydrogen, to generate methane, which is natural gas, in high percentage of methane. The hydrogen sources, if I'm not mistaken, could be from wind, could be from solar panels, but also from hydro, from dams.
Correct.
So, this grant is just to study, call it a feed study, so is it just a feasibility study about the potential that we might have of doing what you're proposing?
Correct.
To team up with whoever has a source of CO2 at the port, that's in liquid form in tankers, and somehow transporting it by pipeline, I think you mentioned, I guess it could be by truck, or it's staying in liquid form.
Or rail.
For our two mineral state, for EOR opportunities, but you also said storage. I think storage is kind of an issue now, especially recently, when the EPA recently denied approval of a couple of past six permits for storage, so that's a hurdle that may never be overcome, storage, but usage for EOR, like what happened at Burbank, sure has my interest, Pete. What other, what other uses, besides that, would there be for CO2? I guess to make methane, and then methane to be sold in the pipelines, or maybe used for cogeneration to electric. Is there a certain area within the county that you anticipate concentrating on, where you would, for your study? Were you just talking about the middle of our mineral state?
I appreciate your insight in this, because I don't, I actually have no idea.
All right, so these are in, okay, so, the grant's a million dollars, it requires 20% participation, which may have another term, you've got to put in 20%. TU has contribution, maybe not monetary, but maybe...
Right, we did tuition, and back at the time.
And if you're willing to share that with us, if we contribute some of the research we've already done, we've been working on CO2 now, for probably four years maybe, not longer, so we have a lot of data, and a lot of experience of navigating some of our opportunities that we could share and contribute, and what kind of document would we use?
Yeah, that would count as cost share.
And I'd also like to know, by this letter of support, there's no commitment on our part, is that true?
Correct.
Other than we just support you in your effort, but at a later date, if you're awarded, we would enter into some formal agreement to who does what, and who shares what. You mentioned $200,000 coming to the Minerals Council, which, you know, it would be because we're making a contribution, of course, of our effort and our research, but, anyway, so those are just some thoughts and concerns, and just some information I wanted to share with the other council members that didn't participate in our meeting on due. But that, Chairman, thank you.
Councilman Redcorn?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the letter of support to TU to do this.
I'll go to the board and approve the letter of support. I'll second, second by Councilman Waller. Any discussion?
So, what you're looking at is a simple turnaround of understanding and support of this application, and then at a further date, you may possibly look at a letter of commitment on some part on our behalf.
Correct.
Thank you.
With this, with this study, go ahead.
May I, the letter was shared with me, but I've not had time to review it, and, I mean, I read it, but I've not had time to propose any edits to the letter, and discuss this with the council. I guess my request, Councilman, will be that we think about some edits to the letter.
We can do that, but next time, if you and I recommend you read it.
I have read it, I just have not had the chance to talk to you all about the process.
But thank you, then, but I...
I'll try to understand that.
Just asking for support, right?
Yeah, it's just a general letter of support, because there's a phrase or two that I would suggest that we add, that we can talk about now.
Johannes, Dr. Johannes, the study, would it include the cost of that pipeline?
Yes, so, the, probably the rental cost, whatever it is to use the pipeline, yes.
More than a million dollars, wouldn't it?
Oh, no, 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 so, we're just looking at, not actually doing it, like, looking at how much it would be to rent it, to use it to move the CO2.
It wouldn't include the pipeline, right?
What's that?
It wouldn't include the pipeline? How much it would cost to put a pipeline all the way?
No, 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 it wouldn't include that.
So, if we approve this later, then we'll find out later on, how much it would cost to make that pipeline?
That's right, how much to, might make it, or rent it out.
What would be your estimate of it?
I have no idea. It would be a complete guess.
Councilwoman?
Well, I just, if we go ahead and do a resolution of support upon the approval of our attorney, since he had time to look at it, I just, if we approve the resolution, is that...
And I apologize for any misunderstanding, I did look at the letter, but was not assigned to make any corrections, too, but I would recommend that we, you know, put it in the tone of the Minerals Council, and some ideas along those lines.
So, just to kind of go off what Councilwoman Irwin's mentioned, if we just want to amend the original motion to what she said, and wait until the next meeting comes around, and Raleigh gets information back there, so after his review, and then...
Councilman Redcorn, would you want...
That sounds good to me.
Go ahead, Council. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Call for question.
I'm sorry, what is the motion? Because...
We want...
You amended it even more.
I did. Yes, I would like to add the element of after the review of council.
Okay.
Please.
Councilwoman Erwin?
I'm trying to relax, I'm curious.
Councilman Reddick?
Yes.
Second, or Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tish Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Dr. Johannes. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman Reddigo.
Be in touch. Universal thoughts, we appreciate you.
Stay in touch, Wallace.
Thank you.
Now, we can go to Rumble Resources, is that correct? Rumble Resources is new, all these Matthew Pattersons. Thank you, Jeff Cumpel.
Good morning. We were, we would like to nominate the northeast quarter of eleven twenty-six eleven. Just on the west side of Harborville.
What quarter section are you talking about in eleven?
Northeast quarter, East, yes. Eleven twenty-six, it wasn't the lease, more commonly referred to as the O S H Allen lease.
Is this a gas lease?
It's in wayside and Mississippi chat. Well-known wayside, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Hi, Matt. Just in the correspondence that we've received on this, I see that you addressed us under, as a CEO of Blackback Petroleum? What is the relationship between Blackback and Rumble?
I own both of those. Blackback Petroleum is my operating company that I work with in Texas. We operate about a hundred wells in the South Texas. Blackback is purely just my Texas entity. Rumble Resources is the entity that I hold, the oil and gas assets I have here in O S H County.
Do you have, do you have any other oil and gas leases in O S H?
Yes, sir. I have, we, my mother and I, we, I grew up in Skidmore. And we have three quarter sections to south of Skidmore. And then we're in the process of transitioning to additional quarter sections that are joining our property. I own the service, the leases that we have currently in Skidmore property. And then we own the, we have leases on this as well.
Okay, so the, you're asking for an oil lease only. Is the gas, is the gas lease held by production by somebody else?
No, there's no, no gas production from the field in that particular area. And I don't believe that there's any closed pipelines. I mean, along Highway sixty, there probably is something in there, but it's not, not on companies.
You know, how many wells are on this track?
I believe there are nine, if I can find.
And how many of them do you think might be potential production?
Seven.
Seven out of nine?
Yes.
Who had it before you, before now?
Rand Energy.
Rand?
Yes.
You know how long it's been abandoned?
Since, I believe, April of twenty, it was right on the calendar.
And I would like to ask our staff, do we know if this lease is available, the lease? Have we checked with the superintendent?
We...
Have you checked with the superintendent?
Yes.
That's something, Chair, that we've asked time and time again. So that we're not selling leases that are already held by production by somebody else. Because we've done that by accident before. That we, in advance of our meeting, when we make the decision to sell the lease, we need to make certain it's available. But with that, that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? There are none. Entertained motion to this whole lease, some of, some of, not a motion by Council, Secretary of Tish Waller is the second, second to Councilman Big Horse. Any discussion? There are none, call for question. That is twenty percent royalty, right?
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tish Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Matt. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Going down to the, on the agenda, the next is Northern California upside, Paul Gatheron. Councilman Waller?
Yes, we have had the invitation to send our Chief of Staff out to California to this meeting to represent not only the council, but our position to help the folks out there to look at what is available. And this is for the resolutions to allow to play for track. And that's my motion, Chair.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Waller.
Is that correct?
Thank you. Since that, Chief of Staff rentals to Northern California.
As requested.
As requested, to attend the Northern California O S H Paul Gatheron, October sixth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. What was the request for, for, by who? By this?
By the, it's Northern California. The Northern California. We were sending an email and we didn't send it out. It's in there.
Yeah, and so we were all invited to that. I'd be interested in going as well.
Any other discussion or question?
I think the former chairman should be the one to account, but that's okay. I think so. You've been after nine times, Karen.
I have a question. Are we paying for just hers or hers and Paul's to go?
I believe it's just for leasing. Isn't that correct?
I'm not answering that. God, I'm getting ready to relax.
I'm just saying it's just as important for a minerals council person to go as our chief of staff. Don't you think that they would want to see the minerals council individual there?
You want to play for two people.
Yes.
It was really stated like that. Now, if we want to put Paul, Mr. Rebar's name included in that, we would have to amend it to add his name to it.
Or anybody that wants to go.
The silver egg dams are right there. There, there you go.
What David? It should just be me. Any council member that would want to add?
October sixth. You want to amend your motion, is that like that, anybody?
No.
You don't have to.
I'd be a student.
You can do whatever you guys want, want to step out. Okay, please second that.
That we pay for anyone to go to, any council member to go if they want to go?
He agreed, who, who made the second? I did. Okay. There, any more discussion?
Then also whose licensing she wants to...
There are none, call for votes.
Chairman? Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tish Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. I believe it's October twenty-sixth, I think.
Six.
It's October sixth. I play October on Saturday.
One day at the end?
It's on Saturday.
It's on Saturday.
Okay, now, going down the agenda.
Okay.
Five E builders, eleven to two fourteen lease, Steve Wright.
You want?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Renewable Business Alliance, Councilman Erwin, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's an opportunity here for us to join this Renewable Business Alliance in Tulsa. I would think it'd be something that we need to do. We don't really know what's going on in the real world. We have people coming here from all over, inundated by people wanting to put in solar panels, windmills, you name it, we've got it. We don't really know anything about it. But in this alliance, it helps you make contacts with the people that actually have the knowledge that you can maybe get to be able to understand maybe why we should be building against this instead of saying, I don't know. Anyway, I would like to make a motion that we pay five hundred dollars to belong to this Tri Renewable Business Alliance in Tulsa. It's just for us to get information. It's on renewable energy. And it'll be a lot of contacts made there. We need to find somebody that can actually help us and has the information that we need to find to deal with these people wanting to come in and do business. I mean, it's logical to me, but I don't know. I mean, I'm not advocating for us to do any of this stuff. I just want to know what they're doing so we know how to address them when they come here.
Need a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Erwin for the Renewable Business Alliance for five hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
Second, by Councilman Chappert.
I think it was two to fifteen, forty, one thousand two hundred dollars.
Including, including forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I just, I just not like the idea of this young networking. We've paid a council member or two, or maybe even staff, to go down to the big oil expo in Houston. It's a big commitment to develop down there. This appears in Tulsa primarily, so we're fortunate to have the opportunity to drive down there within an hour and send some of these meetings and meet people in the industry and the energy industry. And like I said, we never really know what's going to pop up for us to take a look at. So it's being at the table, being in the loop would be beneficial for us at this, at this point in the fore.
Any other discussion? I like the fact that it's Shane Madsen involved in that.
Really? I didn't know that.
Yeah, the big part, part of it.
Okay.
Any, no, no discussion, call for vote.
Councilman Chappert?
Yes.
Councilman Waller? Councilman Waller? Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tish Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Chairman Reddigo?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda, five E builders, eleven to two fourteen lease, Steve Wright. Steve Wright. Nobody present, so we'll just move on down the agenda. Five F budgets, Chair, Councilman Waller.
Is there a budget in here?
Look, be in here, in here, if you look.
Okay. Since I haven't had the opportunity to look at the budget and everything that tells in the budget, I don't know exactly how we are, what kind of money we have here at the end of the last quarter.
There's not a budget in there.